The CBA meeting at 6:32, public hearing. Will call?
Oh, here.
House Dilbert?
Here.
House Milburn-Haussee? Here. Mr. Repoli? Here. Mr. Guerrero? President Meissen?
Here. All right, the CBA public hearing, zoning variance request on parcel 0633134015 on Anne Street. So we have a number of documents that were sent to us ahead of time, including recommendation from the planner, John. We also have a document in here about a resident complaint, or concern, I should say, resident concern regarding the parcel. You know, it's not on the agenda on how we do this. Do you want to kick it off with public comment first? Do you want to have a public comment? When you come up, if you can just introduce yourself and give your address.
Hi, my name is Brian Martin. I live, yes, I'm at 6th through 7th, Even Ridge, which, that's up the backyard of my property, it's this lot. I'm just, there's already that little barber shop right there. I honestly think this is just going to make the whole area look not pleasant. It's already smashed next door, the, if you drive past it, you'll see what I'm saying. The variances are huge that he's asking for. He's asking for 44 feet, so, and every direction around it, too. It's not just one or two sides, it's all four sides. So, and I don't know if that would make any of our properties go down the middle, but it's definitely a eyesore and not good for resale purposes either. That's it.
And, um, do you want any questions? Anybody have any questions for?
Thank you.
Any other public comments on the, on the zoning request? And our discussion will take place during the... Do you want to open it up to the table for discussion? With the petition right here? Is he down there?
No.
He has a, you know, he was gonna be with dogs, with people.
Any other session where you want to hold off until the meeting when maybe both the petitioners can hear?
Right. Shouldn't he be here? If this was set up for this meeting, shouldn't he be here? I mean, I took my time enough to come here. Is that me?
While we, yeah, Sir Madam, if you might come up, we can, I think you have some questions?
Okay.
Yeah, Sir Madam, if you could.
Essentially, I don't know what, that's why I thought that was still in the council.
We do?
How are you?
Good, for you?
Good, good. So I just want to go over some of these setbacks and variations and dimensions and all that kind of jazz. So I have a letter from planning, but I think you had your eyes, I have too. And I'm just coming from former planning number. There was always a lot of discussion about the setbacks and stuff, the driveways and things of that nature. So how does it work with this?
Well, the surveyors and agents.
Do you have a plot plan, I guess would be my first?
There's a sketch, not a plot plan.
Okay.
Because they, we asked for that, and they said, they want to go for the variance first before they invest the money producing a plot plan, because you need a survey and you're putting a plot line together. So there's a sketch that was sent to the building department. And the 21st, maybe?
Yeah, it should be, we have Anne Street, New Haven floor plan, Anne Street residence up to the final, it's an upgrade.
I don't, I don't know.
So, it's got a lot of elevation.
Yeah, there was a lot of elevation, but not a sketch. That's what I wanted to see.
Yeah.
Basically, what the sketch is showing is 25-foot front setback. Sides are six, 12 on one, and almost 12 feet on the other. And 25 feet setback in the back.
Okay. Great, I can see that, but sometimes it gets to be a heated discussion about the setbacks and driveways and stuff. So that's why I wanted to know, what does this look like? We didn't see that front.
Do you want to say?
Sure. Where is the dri, how long is the driveway? How many vehicles can fit in the driveway?
20 feet driveway on the side. 16 on the other. It's like, the first out.
So this is the garage?
Just the garage, driveway, and a house.
Okay. So 25 feet is the driveway, so we can get two cars in it?
20 is the garage. The driveway is 20.
17 and a half.
Yes.
So we can get two cars in this drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, tell it. But normal driveways are 16.
Okay, normal width is 16? Okay.
Standard width is 16. So you can put two, two cars next to each other and really tight. That's, that's the problem.
Right. Right. And then there's five feet, um, is that it?
So six, six feet setback, but then they provide a total.
12, okay, so 12 and then six.
So, six on one side, 17 total, two, that's what they proposed. The current required is 20, either proposed at each side, so 40.
Total of 40?
40.
So less than half?
Less than half on this side.
Okay.
On the front, 10 feet less, and the back is 20 feet less. Yeah, there were.
Can they reduce the size of the house?
Can they?
Reduce the size of the house, the footprint of the house?
Well, I think, one, one thing that I didn't know, when comparing on BS and A, is that the parcel next door to the, to this property, the, the house is about three feet narrower than this house, but otherwise, they're relatively the same sized house on the same sized lot.
Okay.
Within three feet.
This one, are you on the side?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, the lot next door has a detached garage with the driveway going down the side, whereas this one, the garage is right on the front of the house, with the driveway in the front, which in theory would allow for better sun, right?
And less coverage on the property.
Do we have the daughter of the petition here? Are you, are you related to, uh, Mr. House?
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to come up and, uh, maybe you can kind of, just some, I think, trust about customers, do you have questions for?
I, I was just really, it was really, like, the planner and the, and he are both blessed with this, and, you know, we hire a professional, it's very reason. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of setbacks and driveways and stuff, because again, I completely myself, but that's, that topic, it's planning, it has been before. So I just wanted to make sure we were, our smart teeth and that in our eyes.
Does anybody have any questions for, um, the petitioners?
I'm Susie, hoping there is three of us.
Do you have, um, so we have pictures of the floor plan and all that. And I, I think we have, so we have a rough estimate, or a rough drawing, a sketch of where the house would be located.
Just a sketch, yeah.
Right. And, um, the plot plan is that we just have?
Yeah, like a plot plan, or maybe just something with a little bit more detail that shows where the house would be located on the, on the property.
Um, I don't think that I have a plot plan that's, um, we have to, to share, that's completely, I apologize. You know, this one just has all of the design things, but I have, um, the specifications as far as what was setback.
Yeah, I think we have that, yeah, from, from Brian.
I just wanted to see what it looked like, because you're asking for such an adoption. So we wanted to see, I'm, I think, I wanted to see how that sits on the lot.
I can, um, I have it on my phone, and you can look at it, too. You got a computer over there? Just see on your computer?
If they just forward, they need somebody to show them.
Thank you.
So it looks like it falls within, within all of the setbacks, if I'm understanding correctly? And I would actually hug the west side of the lot rather than the, the east side, so it'd be a little bit further away from the, um, conservative residence lot.
And it is the same sized lot, isn't it, that you have, though?
So, man, we're in current SF2, um, front and rear. I believe that's what John said in his letter, the required setbacks are 35 for the front, 45 for yard, and 20 on the east side, total of 40.
It's why I sent it, because?
No, they were.
The planning review, yeah, there's a letter in there from John, in my.
Yeah.
So the variance requested is 10 feet for the front yard, 20 feet for the side rear yard, and 14 for 23 total on the side.
Yes, but currently, um, new construction, the side setbacks are only six foot, isn't it?
Which doesn't make it.
Uh-huh?
Which doesn't make it.
Well, yes, I mean, like saying, you know, stuff that's been built in, uh, Wetherveine or Decora, or, or Pembroke, or Amherst, not Amherst.
Right, that's another one.
Well, yeah, Decora, I think between the houses.
Exactly, so this, that's six, and six, so that's 12.
Right.
Yeah.
That single family one is yes, at least one has to be six, and a three or twelve.
What?
So, this is falling within that criteria?
Yes.
The side setbacks are falling within what we consider to be normal, because the rear and the front, and how did that fall in the residential office, um, doesn't make?
It's 45 in the rear and 35 in the front.
For a residential office?
Yep.
Okay, so it's, that's what the variance that they're needed?
Yeah, it's not for resolving, it's just your variances, if you can break system in those eventual.
And so the side setbacks for a residential office are always 20 and 40.
The point on side, essentially.
So it's falling under the single family one, but in a subject?
Just residential office.
I know, but it's residential office, but he's asking for a single family one, you something, variance.
I have single family two. I don't know what the difference is between single family and residential family. The difference are, there's only a lot for 260, it's 170.
And then the floor area, 900 on single family, 1768 on two.
All right. Here is the difference. The property right now is stone ro, not single family. So, yeah, what he's, he's asking for is to allow them to build on a single SF1 or SF2, which is a lesser setback. The schedule.
We're closer to meeting a, a single family setback.
So the schedule of regulation allows for a single family one and two, six foot on the side, 12 total, 25 on the, on the front, and 35 on the rear. That's what you're looking for, Chris, right? For a single family?
Yes.
That's what he asked.
Well, my question is just that we're trying to apply the single family requirement to residential office, this parcel, yeah?
He's, he's staying with the ri, with the sides, but the back, um, the SF1 and SF2 requires 35, he's asking for 25. And the front is 25, he's, he's staying with that. So only the rear yard is lesser.
That's not what it says in this. It says that for the front, it's supposed to be 35, and he's, uh, saying 25, so that variance would be 10, and in the rear, it's supposed to be 45, and he's proposing 25, that variance would be 20.
SF, right, not SF1 and SF2, I think that's what Chris is asking. Single family is straight, yes, it's 35, but single family one and two, you're allowed 25 feet per.
Well, one and two are the subdivisions, correct? Which, this isn't the subdivision, this is the residential.
The neighboring. The neighboring parcel, um, is SF2.
But the lot width is 50. So that.
And you're also comparing houses that were built in 1890 to this one that you're trying to build today.
50 by 131. Right.
Yeah, but technically, wouldn't even fall under the minimum lot width for SF2.
Right, that's my.
The minimum lot width for SF2 is 60.
But it's an existing lot.
That's right.
I think that's part of the problem, or part of the reason that this is an existing lot, and which, this couldn't flat out something of this size, you know, the fact that it is existing, but it, it, it does raise some concerns to the neighbors, you know, who are going to start to feel a little, um, cramped.
So with the lot size that it is now, you can't do anything?
Yeah, it doesn't even fit the bill for a residential office, minimum lot width is 100.
So we're really two, two requests. One, you need single family sizing, but then the second thing is to adjust that single family size, because we're not even following from the same theory.
You know what, I, I, the, 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 the. Part of the issue is the fact that this is an existing lot, and, and similar to what just, just took place up on Main Street at, uh, Million and Lincoln, the house that was built on the corner, that was allowed to go in there because that wasn't an existing lot. It didn't meet current requirements, but the fact that it wasn't an existing lot. And I think, you know, that's part of my issue with us sitting in the CBA, is that we're going to sit here for the next however long, trying to sort this out. Then, then, you know, we could have sorted this out.
So it just went to this, uh, behind, uh, I think, this is a plot itself, back in, from?
1936.
Yeah.
So with the size of the lot now, the options are, we can stay as a vacant lot, or we have to bring it somewhere at some point for something, something.
First, be developed at all, right?
Be developed at all, have to be there, uh, brand of variance or something.
You know, I mean, I have to feel for the neighbors, because they, they're, we used to have been vacant, but by the same token, um, we should deny the owner, you know, the right to utilize the property. So it's, it's, we'll do that.
I mean, the, the, the home that we're closing is, is 32 feet. I don't know that there's, uh, you know, a more narrow home that we could, you know, choose a different plan?
That's not itself a problem issue.
Okay.
You, you could put that home over 12 on the square, and, you know, I think our requirement is something like a nine, or, so, so we're gonna stay, no. But I said, it, it, it suddenly, you know, in my lifetime, it's always going to be a lot, you know, and now suddenly, you're gonna put a house in there, that's what I'm, change the whole appearance of the neighborhood.
But the house that we chose is, you know, something I think that will fit nicely in the neighborhood as far as it's, you know, we're not building up, we're not, you know, really trying to push the limits of the lot. It's something that, you know, it is familiar, and it, I think it's size appropriate, it's not going to have any, you know, crazy balconies and, you know, obscure finishes that would make it stand out as an eyesore, anything like that. I think it's going to be relatively unassuming, and, um, you know, it would be nicely finished, which could make us, you know, more appealing as a residential property.
So, man, our, um.
Yes, sir.
The 25 front setback, is that from the edge of the sidewalk? Is that the?
Right. From the right.
Okay, so the right way between the road, between the edge of the road and the sidewalk?
Yes, so it's one foot, typically one foot behind it, and the sidewalk, plus 25, that's where it goes.
Does that allow for a full-size vehicle to park in the driveway without blocking the sidewalk?
25 feet, just like the barber room, 25 feet.
That's what I asked, I was just going to put aside, but, uh. So, if they went up, though, does, would they change the footprint of the house to use the setbacks?
And so they're gonna rush, you know, follow? I'm sure Luke goes here, I see, wait, Luke, so we can get that.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think that's, we probably. In some aspects, could be a way better.
I agree aesthetically. And I, and I understand the idea of, well, let's find an open space, and I enjoyed that, and now there's something there.
Yeah.
And I, and some of the stuff is with that, but at the same time, when there's that open space next to me, there's always the opportunity that something will come there.
Well, at least I get development, you're gonna have that issue, I mean, I lived on that field on Amherst, grew up there a decade, and now we're gonna be helping to get ready to do development, you know?
Right.
So I think the question maybe you want to go on that, the lot or not?
Mario, aren't, aren't the houses in the subdivisions considered, um, detached condos or semi-detached condos? And wouldn't that make a difference in, you know, your neighbors are six feet, but in building?
No, I was just thinking on the, the fact that this lot, you know, if there's a usual area, it's all going to feel, I mean, when you have the government, you're gonna have something new there.
We're not saying he shouldn't have built it, and his property is also attached to this. He could open up his fence and build another little cold barn or something. It's not big enough for a house. It's not.
Yeah, that's the part of the time.
Not that it's bad, but.
So, but do you know if the current fences are on the property lines, or if you don't know?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you know if the fences that are sitting on the property right now, are those not the property lines? You know that, or do you?
Without, without, I don't know. That's why I go out to the plot plan, present, to show you.
I know, I can understand the plot plan.
Should we type request at that bar through the plotting window, right?
Not necessarily for the CBA hearing, but even if you approve this request, they still have to come back to the plot plan, you check it, the building partner, make sure that everything stays within property. Because they're not allowed to build after this meeting, they still have to go through all the permitting, all the permitting required.
So tonight, you just start a process, and it doesn't necessarily commit to anything?
Just committing, committing to the setback, of course.
Did you say you signed a plot plan?
Yes.
What was the word that went?
Take that, please?
Was it a?
Where am I, five? I don't know what I was doing.
Was it a formal po, plot plan, like a site survey?
I know, sketch.
Or was it a sketch?
It's a sketch.
Okay, let's start.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, I just ordered that, that's the only plot plan, so there's not a formal plot. That's just regular ones.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, I think he was waiting for the variance, we denied his, but I, David.
I just put someone into my house, so.
Okay. Oh, we're at 7 o'clock, so although I had it, there's more public comment on us, we'll close it off. Close out the public hearing at 7 o'clock. I was gonna say. Okay. Well, this, yeah, because it had to, so I didn't want, so it's just moving it down in the business. Yeah, floor, yeah. I got another question. You can come around, if you wish. You know me better than that. All right, uh, we'll call a meeting to order at 7 PM for the January meeting. If you could rise and take pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of British Sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will call, please.
House Milburn-Haussee?
Here.
House Dilbert?
Here.
House Guerrero? Here. House Milner?
Here.
Mr. Repoli?
Here.
President Meissen?
Here.
Chairman Nolan Dilbert?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Uh, approval of the agenda. I have a couple of changes to make. So the, the ZBDA public hearing, if we could move that down to, uh, new business and just set that to, uh, item number A, just to make it easy, we'll shift everything down. And then, uh, I would also like to add, uh, closed session. Um, Attorney Addus, are we gonna have a motion after the closed session here?
It'd be a very brief, either approved or, or disapproved, a recommendation of making right.
Okay. Um, if we could, we had the closed session after a call from the table, so then everybody can, uh, we can ask off on the floor, off the table. And I think those are all the changes I have. Everybody else have any modifications? Motion order?
Move.
Support.
All right. It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of the minutes for the, uh, December thirteenth council meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment on the agenda. Do we have any, any, uh, public comment on the agenda items that we got? Sorry, move your leg. All right. Uh, approval of the minutes, council meeting minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider agenda.
I'll move to, uh, accept the consent agenda after that.
Support.
It's supported. Clerk keeping up with us?
Fairly, yeah.
I know we're moving fast. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Properly, uh, passed. Agenda of the bill, Treasurers' report.
Approval of December two thousand twenty-two payroll of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents in bills to be made for December two thousand twenty-two, one hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and fifty-six and ninety-seven cents for a total of two hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-seven cents. Treasurers' report total village assets of seven million six hundred and ninety-four thousand ninety dollars and sixty-three cents.
How old did we pay the bills in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-seven cents?
Support.
It's moved and supported. Roll call.
Trusty Repoli?
Yes.
Trusty Bogowski?
Yes.
Trusty Dilbert?
Yes.
Trusty Guerrero?
Yes.
Trusty Nona?
Yes.
President Meissen?
Yes.
How old did we receive the pile of treasures and reports?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Communication committee reports. Clerk?
Clerk, uh, other items for the February fourteenth meeting, will you do by February fourteenth?
All right, thank you. Uh, Parks and Rec report. Trusty...
We can wait until summer, kind of holidays, and then resume the next Tuesday.
Okay, perfect. If I remember correctly, we didn't have planning, right?
Yeah, that's why I forgot. Parks and Rec.
Okay, no worries. All right, new business. We'll start with, uh, the ZBDA hearing. If we wanna, um, make a motion one way or another, and then we can have discussion on the topic.
This is, so I got my February, uh, this is A and everything that shipped and done this time?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to grant the variance as requested.
We have a motion to, to request the variance as requested, and it's been supported by Trusty Repoli. All right, so now, now we have the motion moved and supported. We can have discussion on the, on the topic. Any, any comments from anybody?
Um, I just have one question. I mean, you said that the property next to it is single-family, right?
Single-family, exactly.
That's another question I had.
So would this be less of an issue that was all different? The single family within the highest compared to the variance?
Looks like it, yeah.
You just don't have a set back.
Most of the, most of the yard setbacks for a single-family, one or two compared to residential office, the, the single-family setback for worms are less.
So it was planted as, kind of grandfathered in, you know, I think it was planted, what do you think, as, that is nineteen thirty-six?
It was planted as a residential facility.
Yeah.
The R O, the, the requirement for a more shutback is because of parking, it's a residential office. This is not a residential office, it's a single-family home. So it was originally planted as residential, meaning it would have been zoned residential, and at some point somebody changed it to residential office?
Right.
I think that, was this property purchased as residential office? I did, that I, I'm buying, I buy it knowing it was office. R O.
The zoning map for twenty twenty-two shows that it's residential office.
That's for nineteen as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, I know, I don't think we've had any changes to that parcel zoning, that's country council that I can remember.
Typically, like, I mean, you have just done, you know, what called, willies, where you look at different areas and change, you know, definitions. So if this could have been done five years ago, two years ago, never. Um, but if it was some five percent, in theory, it would have been... Yeah, yeah, but it could have been twenty years ago, yeah. But you take it through every five years or so.
I do have one question, and I think it would fall in place as surprise. So if, if this is indeed granted, and they choose not to do this, something happens that changes life of not going to build this, does this change apply to that property forever? Only this particular...
The variance is for this particular building and this particular place.
Perfect.
Any other discussion on the topic? Roll call.
Trusty Bogowski?
Yes.
Trusty Repoli?
Yes.
Trusty Guerrero?
Yes.
Trusty Dilbert?
Yes.
Trusty Nona?
Yes.
And Trusty Meissen?
Yes.
Uh, so this will be agenda item B. You guys are gonna test me on how I am at moving down one, one letter. Uh, so set public hearing for C D P G twenty twenty-three public service funding. Uh, we have a deadline of, uh, somewhere near the end of February to have our C D P G, uh, hearing. So it actually falls in line that we could just have our, our C D P G public hearing at the beginning of the February council meeting, and we would meet the deadline.
How's the meeting on February fourteenth?
Yes, so it'll be on February fourteenth on Valentine's Day, so you'll all be my deadline time.
Will they be six-thirty?
It'll, um, yeah. Do we wanna do it at six-thirty, or do we wanna do it at seven? Do it before the council, like, right at, at the same time as the council meeting, or six-thirty, six forty-five?
You don't know, you may have asked, you show up.
Sure. Okay. Six-thirty? Um, do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll, I'll move that we set the C D, C D P G twenty twenty-three public service funding, uh, public hearing for February fourteenth here at six-thirty.
All right, moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, C, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget approval. Miss Hazel, if we could have you come and speak about your budget commitments? Twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, budget approval, please.
I'm asking for the budget to be approved tonight. Um, let me get our budget meeting. I can change the budget meeting that we had. This is a fluid statement, and we are still getting information in. For instance, right next to our voting, we just had a reason today, so we have, it's, uh, two point seven five increase on water. So, uh, we will need to be doing some budget and stuff like that, but we do have another budget, because it's a budget, we have to answer.
Were there any substantial changes from last year's budget?
Not really. It's a pretty much the usual salaries, um, we've been managing as well a bit, we give it like seven percent, salary seven percent, maybe seven or eight percent that we, we want to adjust a little bit, and stuff. We're still on the approach of some of the salaries, so that's gonna be a change. We still have some, I did put, I turned eight thousand dollars for the cap outlet for Parks and Rec, which is, uh, we allocated a hundred and fifty for the lines book, and a hundred eighty for the splash pack. So that's in there, and, um, we still, because we need to start planning, stuff like that, I know that money has been, um, so there will be some changes in the, for, in June, for, stuff like that. We'll have budget amendments for our current budget next month. So I think, I think you go through, make sure we're being the same, make sure we're there, and, um, compliments are kind of signed each time. So I'll be looking at that. Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
I'm looking at, um, Department, uh, four oh five, SMART.
Okay.
SMART rather than...
We won't have any.
Uh-huh.
We, we don't have any this year.
Oh, so we did the community credits and local credits. I thought we did that for one year.
We did it for two years in Rome. Their fiscal year is different than ours, so we can probably use money to align on how we do the budgeting for that. Until then, we don't have a funding and a budget at all.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Freeze.
I just have questions budget related. And our budget review chapter talked about the list of things that we committed to.
Yeah, well, we had, Mario and, um, Brian had talked about the A R P, because that was what they had, was, was gonna happen. And we, we figured out that we spent all the money, and I reported people, but I wouldn't be reporting catch basins, so we, you know, so we decided, yeah, spent that money. Um, I can go back and, I can do a cap outlet list and figure out what we spent this catch. That's helpful. We'll do it that way.
That's your quick word. You're just kind of turning to that pile of money.
But we didn't have the approvals up, right, on the thing, right?
So I just have to really, really stand what's left.
I think the confusion with that is every time a spending poll came up, it was said that we could use our funds for that, but we never actually...
Oh, we didn't actually, yeah.
And so that's where everything got muddled, because everything was like, it was possible to spend that money out. We mentioned that it was possible to spend money out, but we never actually made.
The only actual item that we actually did, you know, our funds for is not allowed to use our things for, which was the... So by using the catch basins and some of the other, uh, items, that accounts for all the art of funds, so that we can report that, you know, it was all spent accordingly. And then that frees up our general ledger, the general budget for, you know...
Whatever you want to do.
I've already listed it. I'm trying to get that, yeah, we can.
Yeah, I'll go to the... Always a question.
Any others?
Any other questions on the table? Motion order?
I have a motion to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented.
Right. It's been moved and supported. Roll call.
Trusty Bogowski?
Yes.
Trusty Repoli?
Yes.
Trusty Dilbert?
Yes.
Trusty Guerrero?
Yes.
Trusty Nona?
Yes.
Trusty Repoli?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up is the Office three sixty-five. So one of the things that, uh, my goal with, um, this year is trying to just kind of inject a little bit more of technology enhancements into the village, um, where possible. And, uh, one of the things that I was really looking at was, um, Office three sixty-five for Google Workspace for Government. Those are two options that are cloud-based subscriptions, where you can have your email, you have storage, you have the ability to do file sharing and all that. And, uh, in talking with our, with our I T vendor, S Y O, he was able to put together a, a package for us, a quote for Office three sixty-five. Um, and Office three sixty-five, one, it would give us the ability to have, you know, our, our email on exchange and our Outlook web mail. Uh, I know that our email is something that a lot of us struggle with on a regular basis, whereas accessing it, or you change your password and now your I P blocked and you can't access it anymore. And, um, storage, uh, within the email has always been a concern. I know I've had to ask for storage increases multiple times. Um, and by switching over to Office three sixty-five, if I remember correctly, everybody gets a terabyte of storage compared to the, like, one or two gigs that you get right now. Um, so it would dramatically increase our storage that we would have. Um, the additional benefit of doing this is that we would be able to have, um, OneDrive, Microsoft OneDrive, as a cloud-based file storage. And what that would allow us to do is when Rachel puts the agenda packets together, like she currently does, instead of attaching the, the, the packet to email, which admittedly isn't as big of a deal if we have a whole bunch of storage space, but she could take that agenda packet and put it on OneDrive and then make it, make it available to us on council as a downloadable link. So you're not sending out this big file to everybody on council, you're just sending them a link. You click that, you download it, and you have all your, all your files. Um, additionally, the, the files that she puts out on OneDrive, we would be able to then, we could actually make them publicly accessible. So like our agenda, instead of having the PDF file that we keep on the P drive in a, in a file server here at the village, Rachel could take that, that PDF file, she could put it out on OneDrive, make it public, and then just send the link over to Genevieve. And Genevieve, instead of having to then take a PDF file and upload it to the site, where now you have different versions, and if we change the agenda, now Genevieve has to go out and make sure that it's, you know, correct and ears. It would just be a link to the, to the file that's stored on OneDrive, one copy of that file. So then, when there are updates, if there's a, if all of a sudden the meeting is canceled, Rachel updates the PDF file out on OneDrive. Anybody that goes to our SharePoint, or, I'm sorry, to our, uh, Village New Haven website, they click that link, and boom, it shows that it's already, you know, that it's canceled. So it's not, you don't have all this, you know, sending of actual files. It's just, you're keeping it in a central location out on OneDrive, uh, which is, which would be really good. Um, I slipped up there and I also mentioned SharePoint. Uh, in theory, with having a, uh, this, this Microsoft account, you could have either like a SharePoint site or some sort of centralized file repository, so that the files that are currently stored out on this P drive, there's a file server that, that currently the village has, um, where it's just got a whole slew of information available. Um, but as trustees, we never had access to the P drive. I just recently got access to it now as being, now being village president and having access to the, to some of the, you know, getting different accounts and whatnot created. Um, but with having this OneDrive and having a SharePoint or a file server, you know, that's cloud-based, we could actually open it up so that everybody equally is able to go out and see these files instead of it kind of being, you know, hidden or, you know, having... instead of it kind of being, you know, hidden or, you know, animals pit up the dirt to, to pull up a, an ordinance file or a resolution, whereas, you know, instead of it being out there on the P drive, it could be out on OneDrive or, or a file repository that we would have access to with this Office three sixty-five. So there is a, there is a cost to it. Um, there's two different, there's two different tiers, there's a standard user and a basic user. Um, and what he had quoted, annual payment for standard users would be nineteen fifty and an annual payment for basic users, basic users meaning that they don't have the entire office suite. So basically, they wouldn't be logging into a computer here at the office. That would be like all of us, all the committee members that don't have a physical computer here at the office. Um, that would be the nine hundred and thirty-six. So, you know, for a grand total of, um, just shy of three grand a year, two thousand eight hundred eighty-six, we would just dramatically increase our technology ability, technological ability that we have right now. And mind you, this would also be offset with what we're currently paying SYO for our current email. Um, you know, we are, we do currently pay, pay SYO for email and, and file storage and all that. So that would off, it would be offset.
That's what you want to do.
Something like that.
So this would actually only be like the ballpark fifty-nine thousand dollars, perhaps, to have that.
So much more capable of.
Now, would this also alleviate, I know we had, um, heard you guys manually backup a lot of your work you do, would this alleviate some of that being cloud-based or auto update?
Right, some of the, so like the files, all the stuff that's stored on the file server, and from, from what I understand, the file server part of it would then, we could transition that over to OneDrive or, you know, onto, onto the pub. That would then alleviate the need for having like the tape backups that we have for that. Um, I believe there are some other services that are still being used on that server. Um, so it wouldn't fully get rid of that server, it would need to do the tape backups, but it would at least reduce.
Minimize our risk, but we would minimize something there.
You know? And there's a lot of, I mean, you know, it was kind of eye-opening when I got access to the P, to the P drive. I mean, there's, there's a lot of information out there, you know, found architectural plans of builders, uh, you know, you can self-serve and go out and find the stuff, it's just kind of nice to have availability. And that would then open it up for all of us on council that have.
And we would all have to have Outlook.
So instead of having the, the current webmail that we're using, it would be an Outlook-based, um, webmail. So it would, it would be, you know, you could still have a webmail or you could do it in an email program like Outlook. Um, the webmail, uh, version of Outlook that, that you have with Office three sixty-five is almost identical to what you would expect to see if you had Outlook program on your computer. So at least for, I think for most of us, you know, like something we're a little bit more familiar with, with our, you know, regular jobs and day-to-day, you know, former jobs or whatnot, where we're using Outlook and using its technologies.
So we talked about one time like increasing the transparency and, um, other than like closed session stuff, the packet we see for our meetings to be able to put it up to the public to see as well, so that, you know, whatever we're talking about at the table, you guys could see too, what it is we're talking about. This would enhance that and be able to make that possible, where they could see, I mean, all the sketches we're looking at or all the documents we're looking at. You know, the public would be able to see that too, right?
Yeah, with it being on on OneDrive and it being, um, you know, a cloud-based, uh, file server, it all really just depends on what you do for the permissions. So, you know, we might need to, to look into exactly what we want to share or how much of it is legally allowed to be shared.
Yeah.
I would imagine that there's no issues, but, I mean, I, I don't know enough to confidently say that at this point, but, you know, yeah, we would be able to share a lot more information by having this one, having OneDrive and doing what we try, you know, publicly available.
I wonder if the packet could just come up when they've gotten.
Right.
They find that agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've always been really jealous of, uh, of Chesterfield. When you go to their website, they actually have their entire like agenda, where you can actually view it and you can actually see the request of why every agenda item is requested and it has a synopsis and, you know, if you, as, as a resident, being able to go out and, you know, you, you see something on the agenda, like Office three sixty-five, and everybody's like, what the heck is this? Why is this on the agenda? You know, in theory, you'd be able to go out there and click it and say, oh, that's what he's asking for.
He would have to do better though, as far as that informational piece on the packet. Because right now, it's just kind of some documents that are related to it, there's not really a narrative of who, why, where.
Right, right, we're trying to do better about doing that, um, you know, like, you know, for item E, maybe add one to the, the letters. Uh, item E, I made it a point to have a memo that went along with, and gave it a synopsis of why we were asking for what the committee's agenda item was. So it's, it's things like that, you know, we do, it's gonna, you know, require some work on our part, some effort to make sure that we're, but I think overall, it would definitely be for the better, you know, interest of the residents and, and us.
If I'm telling this right, there's a difference of, uh, twelve hundred fifty-five dollars.
For multi-clear set, uh, or fan?
Like with current man, fifteen eighty-one?
Yep. I'll send you my stuff.
Yeah, so we're talking a little bit, we said twelve hundred bucks. Four hundred and fifty-one. Yeah, twelve fifty-five.
And that's per paragraph?
That is per.
And with all the departments? Of all the departments?
Yeah, we went through, we, we went through all the current user accounts that we have, whether it's webmail or, um, computer accounts, wanting to be able to log into computers. And we did an analysis of, you know, who needs it, who doesn't need it, so, you know, who needs to have access to the whole office suite.
So there'll be tiers of access, not everybody will have access to it, you know, we.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, having this, this information available out on the web for residents to be able to access, you know, to even save us on boiler requests, because now we have, you know, less people going out there putting in boiler requests because they can go out and see the agenda. They have that information available to them, of the packet. We have a motion.
Oh, I have a motion to, um, and for the new schedule.
It was, uh, SYO was going to set us up.
Oh, SYO?
Mm-hmm.
And has for a year, annual payment for standard users of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and annual payment for basic users of nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, is that correct, Mike?
Right. We have a move in supportive, roll call.
Dr. Hockowski, yes. Trustee for Golding.
Yes.
Trustee Nola.
Yes.
Trustee Guerrero, yes. Trustee Dilbert.
Yes.
Trustee Alba.
Yes. Thank you. All right, item number E, committees. Uh, so like I said, I wrote a memo to try to give them the synopsis, I'm not sure how many, how much of you you guys, uh, read all the way through it, but essentially, we have two, you know, big initiatives that we want to accomplish this year, one of them being the Splash Pad for Community Park and one of them being the acquisition of Alliance Club and, and getting it set up to be a rentable facility for a community center. Uh, what I'm looking for is, uh, to have two committees be curated, one of them in charge, one of them to review the Splash Pad and one of them to, to review the community center. Um, I don't think that these need to be very in-depth, it's just to have some additional help working with DPW superintendent or village engineer for the Splash Pad, uh, making sure that a placement of a Splash Pad is really in the right spot. Uh, we have had some concerns that maybe where we had the, had the Splash Pad drawn out might not be the best spot in relation to community park where it would be. Um, with talking with our village engineer, if we decide to move the location, we're really just talking about the difference in materials for, you know, what the piping and whatnot. Um, it shouldn't dramatically alter the pricing. Um, would also like to, to work with our DPW superintendent, uh, for the Splash Pad committee, because I understand there's some additional, um, plumbing and hardware that was not realized in the, uh, in the quote that we received. Some, I, if I remember correct, Marcus, it was pressure reducers and stuff like that?
Yes.
So making sure that we have all that type of hardware that's realized and accounted for, uh, as we move forward with the Splash Pad. And then lastly, for the Splash Pad, you know, fencing, benches, what type of landscaping we want to do. Basically, you know, really what we should have had all along, uh, when we went through with this plan was a, a real good plan of where we want, what, what we want, the punch list of, you know, what additional, uh, costs are going to be involved. Um, so I'd be looking for a, you know, one or two volunteers to, uh, put something together to come back with a recommendation for those, those items for the Splash Pad. And then for the, uh, community center, we'll call it the Lutz Community Center for now, uh, working with our DPW superintendent, um, probably would be a good idea to also open Parks and Rec, because I think that they really have a lot of, um, vision for wanting to have functions and utilization of the, of the community center, whether it's a Uker party or, you know, what, I don't know, or, um, but, you know, so if, if we, uh, you know, can go through and, and just see what, what rehab do we need to do, short-term, make it usable, and then long-term. There's discussion about the, um, you know, the parking lot. It's, it's a little rough, but I think it might be usable in current condition. You know, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be milled and repaved immediately, um, but those are the things that I'd be looking for, you know, whoever, uh, one or two volunteers from the, for a community center committee to kind of just go through and make a punch list. Again, something we probably should have had all along, but what's the plan of how do we, what do we actually need to do to bring this up to rentable and, and, uh, you know, make it a community center for our residents to be able to use?
How do we come here, Sam?
I will. We have Tracy and Mario for the committee. Do we have any volunteers for the Splash Pad?
Oh, I see any Splash, oh, sorry.
Yes. Farina and Fred for the Splash Pad? Perfect. Thank you, guys. Okay, yeah, so I will, I'll shoot you this in emails and, you know, we can just set up, um, you know, some meetings, um, you know, and work with everybody's schedule and then just try to get some stuff kicked off so that we can, you know, have some plans put together in the, in the following months and then, uh, come back together and really have some formal recommendations all we want to do. All righty, item number F, uh, Channing Street handicap sign removal. Um, we have our co-enforcement officer here.
Yes.
Good evening, uh, and this is Mark Rosick, I do co-enforcement. Um, back, back in October, I sent you an email with a brief idea of what I was trying to accomplish. So back in October, I received an anonymous complaint from a resident in Amherst who said on Channing Street, there is a handicap sign that is placed in front of the house. Uh, after doing some research and speaking to Marcus and some others, he told me about a sign that was put in place about ten, fifteen years ago. Uh, Village Johnson probably was not made aware of it at the time. Um, the resident wanted the sign removed, so I did some research and, um, there is no village ordinance that supports a handicap sign in the roadway. Uh, ADA does not have that requirement either. I can speak to Mr. Addison, but also, um, we came up with some, he must have said whatever, you know, I think for it.
Go ahead.
The sign, we, we should, I'm not asking Village Johnson if they have a discussion and possibly have that sign removed for those reasons alone, but, um, I spoke to the village attorney, he did mention that, uh, when that resident moves, sells the house or whatever, for whatever reason, that sign doesn't stay with the property. So it announces it can be taken out at any time. Um, the sheriff Stevens did go check for me to make sure it was enforceable, and they told me that it was not enforceable. The sign height is incorrect, it's supposed to be certain height and it is not. And just because it's painted blue on the curb, that's just an indicator to allow people to know that their sign can't work. So just because that's painted there, it's not irrelevant. Regardless of the key design, so that's what I'm asking, so Village Johnson, you guys.
Well, I only have one reservation and that, there doesn't seem to be any official action to find and put the sign there. Apparently, a former village president, not present here today, for those who have known, told this guy or, or woman or whatever that they could do this. It's unenforceable, if you want to go park your car there, no one's going to give you the tick.
Correct.
All right? I mean, it's, it's there and it's a convenience for, I guess, people who have some problems in that home. My only fear would be this, if it has been there for fifteen years, you could argue with a prescriptive use. We allow it to sit there for fifteen years, we never took it down and now we take it away. Are they going to sue or an unenforcing handicap sign? I'm wondering, but that would be wrong. It is unenforceable. Anybody who wants to park there can park there. If it keeps people, if it keeps people away, I guess it's offensive, but that, that's all I can tell you. There's, there seems to be no legal basis to the sign.
So when you say sign, are we talking about an actual sign?
An actual handicap sign, like it's, uh, it's on post and it's in the ground, it's right, uh, it's literally right in front of the house, um, and then the curb's painted blue. Um, and then it's done.
The current residence, to our knowledge.
The same residence that.
Oh, with the thing with.
The one that made the request is still there.
Oh. And you know, the, the handicap?
There is a vehicle that is constantly parked there, does have the markers for handicap. Um, I've seen the placard and I also see the, uh, license plate, so there is a, somebody who has handicap permission over there. But they also have his embers, so, I mean, if you met an embers, you know they have alleys. The alleyways, the distance between the front steps and the back steps, where you park your car or not, is probably the exact same distance. So why you're, why they were granted permission to have parking in the front on the street? I'm not very sure why. We have no information, cannot find any documents to support why they did it, other than the president said go anyway.
With embers being one-sided parking, that just makes it, you know, if, if other residents are respective of the fact that it has the handicap sign, you know, that just limits them, the amount of parking that's also available on the street as well.
And plus, one thing to notice in an embers, most of the, most of the side streets all have two hydrant locations on their street, so depending on how big that street is, you now have two hydrant, you have two hydrants, which takes away parking fifteen feet on each side of the hydrant, so, or fifteen feet in front. So you're losing two and a half, three car spaces for parking, and now we have the handicaps, which is, I'm not sure the distance is probably fifteen feet with the parking that it takes up, so you're now losing even more parking, street parking for residents who live around Channing.
They have the, um, parking on the hydrant side, doesn't it?
Yes, most of them all do.
Something I never understood when they put the, when they decided to. Right, I should have gone on the opposite side.
Given that it's just not enforceable, you know, there's no rules to support it, it makes sense that it gets removed, but would it be appropriate to, um, if we decide to do that, would it be appropriate to notify that person of why that woman was made?
This is more practical, I believe. I, I think if you could avoid a confrontation and said, look, you know, you don't know how you got it and you don't know why you have it, we, we can't enforce it for you. We'd like to take it down, that, and, and give them notice of that and see if they want to come and talk to you or whatever, once they just know it and you can do whatever you wish. The only, the, the thing I don't know, if we could find out, wait, you know, four weeks before you make a decision, when was this permission ranked? How long have these, had the ability to control that parking spot? You got, I think they're all familiar at some level with the idea of prescriptive use. If, as a government, I allow you to do something for fifteen or twenty years, fifteen seems to be the magic number, by the way, in Michigan law. And then all of a sudden, I say we can't do it, that they couldn't, I gave you the decline, that we, we had an understanding. That we had an understanding that you relied on and now you're taking it away and we don't know why. Would someone sue over this if we can't enforce it anymore? I don't know. I mean, are other people parking there? I don't know that either.
I don't think that answers it. I don't know if there's anyone else parking there.
It's a more of a practical question than a legal one, but to your, I think, common sense suggestion, why don't we send them a letter and say, or a suggestion, we're going to take this down. If you can tell us or give us information why we shouldn't, give us a call. If they've got a letter from a previous board or something relevant in this, or if they have a legal document, we certainly don't see it and it's not filed anywhere. But maybe that way we're at least able to argue.
Is the resident was aware of the agenda I did today?
I have no idea. And I have not reached out to that resident. You know, the anonymous complaint, I emailed back letting them know it was on the agenda outside of that and not notified.
So this is, this is because someone complained.
Somebody complained in Amherst. Because they, the way I read their email was that if we were allowing for one resident to do it, are we going to allow it for everyone?
Right. Are they the only handicap resident in Amherst? And does that mean that we're not going to allow a handicap spot for, I mean, really, doesn't even, doesn't even limit it to Amherst? I mean, you know, because all the subdivisions are public roadway.
I was going to ask that.
Public roadways, public roadways.
Right, public roadways, public roadways. Well, the subdivision streets were originally private. And I don't know if this was private roadway when the handicap sign originally went up? And then converted over to public? Because at one point the village took it over. You see, it's a touch trace that maybe this was after it was public.
And I'm not sure it really, that would even be relevant. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I'm going to add to Mr. Davis's point, but we'd let it continue. So I'm not sure that you're going to need to.
Just a cautionary tale. They should have control.
They have no control. That is the first thing I asked is can we each way remove that sign? And they said they have no control over public roadway.
Well, I guess that question, if I go back, because I've been granted affordably to control. Because they really didn't take control of those streets until 12, 13.
Closing in on a number of years, it makes it sensitive.
The information I was 10 to 15 years old, so whatever it's been after.
11 or 12, 2011?
The only way that happened in subdivision, I mean, the roads are going to be, the villages, and it's at a certain point where they're all, even in the documents, when they apply, it says in there that the roads will be turned over to the village.
All right.
So I guess, I'm going to repeat my thoughts or that so we prepare for anyone that has a handicap. Is it registration or license? What's the correct terminology?
Permit.
Permit, permit. We'll let them have a spot in their house.
Well, obviously you're not going to do that. You can't do that. I, well, somebody, if I'm not a board action that I'm aware of. So maybe my best advice is that they be advised that the board is willing to consider this. And if they can come forward with some documents, like gives them a legal right, that's fine. If not, then you can do whatever you want.
And it's high of course, and this, we've had 15 years. I used to make a list and how they're supposed to do from the reason.
And I use it as a thinking part of the time you put better way to do that stuff.
That's why I wanted to bring the village council, so you guys could have a discussion.
It's a full idea. So if this was permitted by a former village president, should it be documented in the letter?
You would think so, but whether or not it is, I don't know. I cannot find any documents. I've only been code enforcement since March. I know if the DPW, they put it into place, you'd think there might be some type of work order that suggests that they put it in, but I don't know if that even exists. Outside of me just speaking to all the members of the village on how this went in or what this went in. Mr. Gilbert in the back, he really is the current DPW superintendent.
Only one Mr. Gilbert, that's me.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't starbys.
Okay.
I can't remember the year or.
It wasn't starbys, yes.
Yeah.
So what if the resident is able to provide?
It's still not supported by village ordinance or anything else.
But I think that's the right approach.
Right.
We don't want to just say, we're going to yank it out and then even comes forward and says, I got your reputation. And just because you guys didn't keep it, it's not my fault. But if you put the onus back on them, if they can't produce anything, can't show us anything, then you can take the appropriate action. In the meantime, they should know, nobody's going to enforce that. You can decide if we park it all night tonight. How bad?
We were given a directive and it got done. I can remember it. It was, it was a long one. But that's what happened. There's not, there's not going to be any paperwork, a work order. It was go to this. Yes.
So maybe we're delayed 30 days or so to give this push.
That's why, do you want me to draft a letter or would somebody else draft that letter?
If you call me, I'll help you draft a letter.
All right. I don't think we need much on that one, right?
No.
We'll put it back on the February meeting agenda.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, sir. Oh, actually, you know what? I'm sorry, Mark. We had talked about, I don't know, you know, I know we have some new council members and whatnot. I don't know. Has everybody gotten a chance to, I don't, you know, trust me, you know, you're new to the council. I don't know if you wanted to just kind of introduce yourself or reintroduce yourself to the council. I mean, I know we just already got the topic.
Mr. Gilbert, I do know. Mr. Noda, my name is, well, you already know, my name is Mark Carlson. I've been code enforcement since March 2021, or 22, sorry. Taking on as a part-time role. I do work full-time. I am a 911 dispatch supervisor for Police Department in Golden County. So I do this on my off time. I work midnights. So come in the village and I work a couple hours during the day, a couple days a week. Depending on the time of the season, might be grass and fixated on or whatever else, you know, I take complaints, anonymous complaints for residents. Also take complaints from, if, you know, close council sees something that they want taken care of, I have zero problems doing that. And if Brian knows, sends me messages at all times of the day, even when I'm trying to sleep. So get out there and try to take care of it. You might see me driving through the village. I have a pickup truck and I have code enforcement on the side. So if you ever see me, you can stop and say hello. Usually on the monthly that I send, I have my phone number, my email address in there. You can call me at any time. Send me a cell phone. You can send me a voicemail or a text and I'll just reach out back to you, if I get it. And I enjoy dealing with that. So I appreciate the opportunity from the village to talk to the law making changes.
I work the night shift, so I'm not sending messages to you.
Yeah. Seeing during the day is one of the most difficult features.
And I have a tendency to message the folks that are not on midnights during the night. That's where they are. The folks that are on midnights, I'm messaging them every day.
My team says it works too.
Yes, we share, we share office space. Tried to get them to push in a closet and they told me no, so. We do share office space, so. Thank you very much.
All right. Number G, LED fire department interior lights. Chief, sir?
Pardon me, I have a quote from interview specialists group. For a couple of projects, cost $2,320 a dollar, but rebate of $2,113. For the net project cost $4,266. What this will do, will bring in 40 new flat panel lights, similar to what's just above me. With the interview offers, both bathrooms, always. One with a couple retrofit, three, two old refits and a few we deployed, just ready to change. They're getting, they're getting old. They're going to need the ballast replaced, the ballast run that they were 34, 30 to 40 dollars a piece. And a bus, an electrician to swap it out. The 42 flat panels come off to about a hundred dollars each. But the cost savings, we'll all love to take that in a couple of years. So this is a, I believe, Q 214 in our maintenance fund.
One of the things that was kind of funny, I, you know, I've been spending more time in the office, obviously, and going over and talking to the fire department. I always thought that they just liked to keep the lights turned off, remove lighting and whatnot, just, you know, ambient lighting, not as bright, not as, you know, jarring. I'm talking to the fire chief and he goes, no, those are all the lights that are burned out. So, you know, it was kind of what spurred on this conversation of, well, if we have all these ballasts that are out, why don't we just fix it and get it done?
Now, we just did this somewhere in the building, correct?
Well, we've got it, the parking lot, we have like the buildings, the outside of the building.
So this would be the rest of the lights again in our entry.
Yeah, and I, and I will forewarn that what I've asked Sandy to do similar for in here, for the, for the lights in here. And it may be something in the hallway, trying to brighten the hallway a little bit. All of these bulbs are incandescent. And that one over there likes to drop every time the furnace turns on as the heating unit is up. Over here, we have a bulb that I suppose. So, yeah, anyway, long story short, we're going to see more of my requests to convert over now to be more efficient.
How long is this estimate with?
It does not say.
One of the reasons I ask is simultaneously, we have some other things going on and I'm wondering if we should maybe pause on this for a minute?
With the.
With the building itself.
So.
Your thoughts?
Try to get like a saving plan.
Well, oh, well, that's what I didn't think about that. I'm thinking about there's some things going on with the building itself and I'm not wondering if we should pause before we continue to invest money into building. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, I think that if we were, if something were to ever happen where we were able to vacate this building, I would imagine that there's going to be requirements of vacating it in a usable condition or, you know, cut, managable condition. So we're probably going to have to fix all the lights that are broken over in the fire department anyway. Whether or not it would just be replacing ballasts or, you know.
Unvirtually, it's not usable.
Well, yeah, that side I don't think is the issue.
Um, okay. I'm not saying no. I'm just saying I'm wondering if it's something we, we might want to think about pausing till we get some more information. And then with the, also set about, could we do all of it and is there might be a little bit of a rate?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that seems like that might be a beneficial, you know, maybe we could, if we could have you add in what we were talking about, what Sandy and I were talking about, like the balls in here and it would get us something better than that.
I mean, we just had the director.
Thankfully, it's just the hallways. I think the whole part. Yeah. Okay. So then, how about we, how about we table this for one month and we'll bring it back in February? November, fourteenth? All right. Item number H, engineering solutions upgrade to cell modems on PRV.
Good evening. I'm asking for us to purchase this upgrade for our PRV station. A couple of weeks back, we had issue. PRV is the pump station over here on 26th and Ratchet, where we bring the water from Detroit and we reduce it down. The pressure comes in at 100 plus, yes, I reduce it down from 6 to 8 in the system. Our current PRV system is upgrading. Couple of weeks ago, we had some of you that had some pressure problems. What happened was the PRV and water tower stopped communicating. It runs out of modems and the modems just went bad. It went out, went back, worked about 16 hours a day trying to figure it out. Was there all day unplugging, resetting on the line with engineering solutions, you know, just trying to figure it out, come up with a solution. Came to a solution. They're back. And another solution that they are obsolete is down in 2007. The ones we found some on eBay, they're used, they're the old modems. But in saying that, engineering solutions also have told us that this upgrade will be needed anyway because if, say a specific thing in our PLC goes off, which is the string, they can't fix it because it's obsolete. So therefore I asked them to give us a price to upgrade your cell modems. We need three send cards that we would send out to get programmed and we have it. We've been dealt with, I'm sorry, we've been dealt with engineering, just to let you know, I told the guys before, since the PRV's been struck, I've been trying to kind of get a feel for other companies that they'll, I don't trust them. I don't, I just don't, I'll be honest with you. I'm comfortable with their solutions. I've been dealing with them. They, you can call them anytime, at night, day, whatever. They'll, they'll try to walk you through it if they can, you know, figure it out.
This was a reminder that you guys had a lot of trust and faith.
Yeah.
We've had a long standing history of, on the PRV. You know, and at the end of the day, I mean, when we have equipment powers, we can't go and be there to purchase or replacement, but it's just.
After we found them on eBay, also when we were talking to tech, tech support, Sandy and I, well, you have to get them reprogrammed and yada, yada, yada and all this and.
Performer's expired.
Performer's expired. So it was, it was block, block, block. So we were like, well, what's the next thing that we do?
Yeah. So the one thing that isn't included on the quote is the price of free send cards for the modem, but.
Subsidies.
Yeah, I was going to say they can't do that.
We're going to have to sell service.
Yeah. So instead of having, having these radio, it's radio wave right now, radio modems. So radio wave, now these are going to be 4G or 5G cellular, you know, signal modems. Latest technology and we don't have any issues.
Personally, out of curiosity, how old are the ones you have?
These have to stop making them for years, so we have them longer than that. We, we're in a first truck that has only worked by some of them. They may work to connect, but we thought we'd just purchase them and we can watch.
And I think if I understand correctly too, just to also in the background, you know, when we have, when we're running off of a water tower, then this PRV doesn't have to work as much because you have the additional pressure that can be given to our water system from the water tower. But then when we're not running off of a water tower, now we're depending on that PRV to up the pressure. So there's, there is this communication that Marcus was talking about where, you know, if the tower is at one pressure and the PRV has to get the other, that's where we right away can get that stable pressure. But with these modems not working, they're manually having to go out, compare and adjust. So, you know, I know we've had a lot of folks noticing that, you know, pressure is high, pressure's low.
So we're still currently in manual mode?
Yes, what happened was because they weren't communicating, so PRV's been saying that we're at a hundred and twenty-three point four feet. So the water tower said we were at sixty-six. So they were just saying two separate things, so the water tower's saying, kick on, we need water. The PRV's saying, you have water. So they were just fighting each other, so it might run to six inch for a little bit, then it just cut off. So, but you're at sixty-six, so sixty-six, you're not even moving the bulb. You're under the bulb, you know, it's down. So we're getting to the point where it was, the height was coming down, so our pressure was going lower. We got down in the forties, and I just made the decision to go on local pressure, which right now, we're on local pressure, we're operating up in Detroit. It's a straight pressure, they're giving us one-twenty, we're pushing out sixty, and we're just setting it going off of local pressure, which we normally run out of power, which is power elevation. So the saying that power fails, it cuts off at twenty feet, we run out of power. Keeps our pressure deep. Then when it fills up again, you know, that's how we...
So right now, they're currently not communicating, so we're manually regulating everything right now?
Yeah, but then I put on local pressure and just, we're running out of Detroit pressure. We're not using the water, we're not using the water tower, I turn the tower.
Yeah, it was, yeah, we were just running back and forth, back and forth, like fifteen hours.
Which also, which also then means that the benefit of being able to fill the water, the water tower at a lower rate, we're not, we're not doing anything.
We're not doing anything at all, right?
Oh, that's, yeah, right, we're not doing anything at all right now because we're just having to go off of Detroit City. Any other questions or motion, or on the topic, you have a motion?
I make a motion to purchase from Engineering Solutions Midwest cell modems for communication for twenty-one thousand two hundred thirteen dollars, not including the SIM cards and monthly of the same price. Support.
We have a need to support it.
Mr. MacRae? Yes. Mr. Gerera? Mr. Dilber?
Yes.
Mr. DiColi?
Yes.
Mr. Noda?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And that does include antennas, main breaker program, so it's not just, oh, you're buying a modem for... No, no, you're fine, but, you know, just make it clear, it's a whole system, you know?
Thanks, sir.
You can be up here for a trial, sir.
Oh, yeah, all right, unfinished business. Uh, now we're back on track with the nupplating, so item number A, DPW Snowplow.
I bought and brought it to you previous, previously, but they didn't include a down payment on the quote. This one we did. That's what we, that's what we're gonna do.
So the down payment of fifty percent will be due, uh, yeah, September of this year.
I mean, we have the funds in there, it's quite a break.
Sandy? Are we gonna do this, because Sandy and I had spoke about what funds we were offering for the trucks.
The trucks, probably, probably at fifty-one months. And some general funding. Probably in major, major has most money, unless we have, we have to decide. When they have the road committee, we have to figure out what they want to do first, before we decide if we should go with the truck or not. So, the two hundred dollars, it has to be decided. That's our option right now, or I will find, I will find myself.
So I think from the, for the road committee, if I can speak on behalf of the road committee, I think we have, we have a manning project that we're gonna be allocating funds for.
That's a little, that's a big deal, a lot of money, you know, a few thousand, you know?
So why don't we, is it, you need it, okay, so you want the road committee to meet and come up with a plan for this year? And then, does it also need to go through Waze's review, or?
We could do that. And then we can sort of, all the funds we need, let me just start with the primary, the primary debt.
Okay. Since we have until September, we have plenty of time that we can make sure that we come up with a full plan of where the funding is gonna come from. So everybody, everybody okay with that? We'll bring this back in February?
Well, we still need your deposit. Because he wants a purchase order.
They have, yeah, they have to, they have to order the chassis. That takes long, so they're trying to get approval.
They want a purchase order.
They want approval in the chassis.
And they want a motion, yeah, approved.
So you want a motion that it'll be approved, you just don't necessarily know where the funding, which, which fund, the fund is gonna come out of?
I will put it in August, I think, before we do that. We will, we'll decide in August, first, September deposit, on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, so, Chris, my question, are you able to hear?
She's gonna decide in August that she's gonna do it.
Right, okay, so we can, we can, if we do the motion for the fifty percent deposit, then we can, we have between now and August to come up with exactly which funds the funding is going to come out of. Overall, though, I think between general funds, the highway fund and all that, I mean, we have the funds available. It's just figuring out what the split is between where the funding actually comes from.
I think that's what I need to do.
Okay. Do we have a motion to commit to the fifty percent deposit, I guess is what this is for?
Basically, the motion says that we need to approve that we give up on company's purchase order to both in, um...
Move forward.
Be part of the chassis. We're looking for a purchase order, we need to approve a purchase order.
So we're looking for a motion to move forward with the purchase order for the purchase of the chassis for the, for the snowplows.
So, let's say, fifty percent on your side?
Uh, yeah, fifty percent deposit. So you have the...
Hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty.
One fourteen, one four... Fifty percent of what? One fourteen, eight ninety.
And this is for two bulbs, but it's for two snowplows, so actually, it would just be the one fourteen. One fourteen, and we, I'm sorry, eight ninety, one fourteen, eight ninety is the amount. Because it's for two snowplows, so fifty percent, plus the one full plug.
You know, when you say a snowplow, these are the big counter trucks, so you know, this is the F pretty good. Yeah, I just wanna make it clear, you know, these are four hundred, two hundred thousand dollar trucks.
Again, I don't oppose the purchase, but I like to have a...
I agree. I just, you know, I just know.
Yeah, no, that's not me, I should have known that, we had a couple more items that we needed to take care of on this one. So we have a mo, we have a motion with trustee Carina, or trustee Barrera?
Ask support, if somebody else did.
We have support from trustee Van Kauwski, roll call?
Mr. Barrera, yes. Mr. MacRae?
Yes.
Mr. Dilber?
Yes.
Mr. DiColi?
Yes.
Mr. Noda?
Yes.
And Mr. Vessin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. All right, item number B, under unfinished business, is planning commission appointment. We only had one letter of interest from a Ms. Katie Sondrowski. Um, we have the letter of interest that was in her packet. I don't believe Ms. Sondrowski is in the audience. Um, I, I think because we just had one letter of interest, we actually told her that, you know, we probably need to interview her, because nobody, nobody to interview against. So I'd be looking for further approval to appoint Ms. Sondrowski to the planning commission position opening that I have.
Support.
The move to supportive, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, any objections? All right, motion carries. Uh, trustee appointment, we had posted and requested for letters of interest to, again, be sent to clerk Witsup for the trustee position. Um, this time around, we only had one letter of interest from Mr. Suchi. And so I don't know if anybody, if, again, I mean, we only have one letter of interest, so I don't know if anybody wanted to ask him questions, but otherwise, with only one letter of interest, I'd be asking for a motion to appoint Mr. Suchi to the vacancy. Move to supportive. Um, for council, depends on the year.
How do we do it if this council votes on spending months?
Okay. Uh, can we do a roll call then, too?
Mr. Dilber?
Yes.
Mr. MacRae?
Yes.
Mr. Gerera?
Yes.
Mr. Noda?
Yes.
Mr. DiColi?
Yes.
Mr. Vessin?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Suchi, and thank you for sticking with us. Item number D, we have council rules of procedure and ordinance three seventy-six, trustee DiColi.
So last month, I brought a proposal to talk about to the board, and we had two meetings a month and we discussed that we would incorporate all the changes we wanted to make to the rules of procedure. When I signed out in the packet, two more came in later, I think, like trustee Van Kauwski and President Mysen. I had two other items under it. But I have to hold our meetings twice a month, no business after nine-thirty. I think we talked about this before, President Mysen, to post our ordinances to the public before we vote on them for transparency, so that, right now, we have proposals or ordinances that are in front of us, and we're voting on them, and we ask for public comment, but we don't share the ordinance. So I don't know how the public can comment on an ordinance that we don't share first. And that would go to lessen the burden of doing that, if it was two meetings a month, we wouldn't be delaying ordinances by months. We would just, we'd be a couple of weeks. We took out some things in the rules of procedure that we voted on last time, a lot of them is the minimum requirements for things that we put in our minutes, and we didn't have on there that you had to add who voted on what. And I think that should be reincorporated in our minutes, so that, we do it now, but it's not in our rules to do it now. And then the other, and this is just a nerd thing to add on me, but we took out the part that how we run our meetings will be unless there's conflict with the law, to run by law rules. So we have some kind of, it just says part of my procedure. Though, though, copy I have just says part of my procedure, so that's just a change I did. And then, just for me, record, I had around, I had unfinished business, I had a new business, because I think that we should be finishing, finishing items before we start new ones, you know, and it's earlier in the meeting where we can get things done quicker. And then, President Mysen wanted, to have the, whoever has the agenda item to be named on the agenda. And trustee Van Kauwski wanted back...
Have the permission to be provided? Do you want me to hurry?
Yeah, please.
So look a narrative, what are you looking for, what are you looking to do, and just the information whereby how often we get, for example, I'll pick on Brian, they said Office three sixty-five, and it had information of what it costs, but Brian had to explain, and if he could have just given us a narrative of what we want, then that gives us our committee to maybe do some research before we come to the meeting on that particular item, and better prepare for questions. But when you come to the table and if you bring it up, you don't have time to digest what it is we're looking for and ask appropriate questions?
So I have a little, you see here...
How would, how would the company be like, like, all, all known materials at the table?
No.
There would be nothing added to the agenda without a synopsis.
Yeah, and we could create a, make a generic form that would keep us on our path, who's requesting it, what the topic is, and...
We actually did have a form.
Yeah, when I was a clerk before, I think the president at that time had a form that gave us a synopsis of what to present.
Yeah, and, you know, with this Office three sixty-five that we did approve, that form would be, you know, out on a, on a one drive, so easily accessible. I know, I know when we did have the form previously, I always was challenged to find it in my email.
And one of the things I do often is I'll ask questions that I already know the answer to, but I ask the question so that it can be heard in the meeting. And if the Office three sixty-five with the packet that I'm looking at where I already know the answer is out there, then I won't do that much, but, um, yeah, if the, if the information's also provided, you wouldn't have to ask that too, right?
I, I would still, yeah, I would still ask the questions as you do, just for the audience to see, because I use, like, I sprint to Marcus, what is, what are you talking about? If you see faces going, what is that?
Yeah.
That answers the question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do what they have in there. So I guess my question is too, is with these proposals, do we want to vote on them individually, or? I mean, because if there's opposition, any of them, if anyone in particular, we can vote on the rest of the things.
Do we have any opposition on any of the other items here, or any discussion on any of the items here?
I'm, I'm gonna be opposed to item one and two.
You know, I think with, with us having the synopsis, and maybe with us making it more of a point to have the completed plans, admittedly, we're still getting there. We had a couple of items here tonight that we had at table because we didn't have everything fully together, but, you know, we're really making a concerted effort to come with a finished plan, not a, you know, or, or more of a plan. You know, maybe, maybe we don't need item number one as much. And number two, you know, as far as no business being conducted after nine-thirty, I mean, we still have an hour and a half. We can talk about this for a long time, but...
Well, I'm just saying...
As long as you kind of see where it comes from on both of those.
Even if we have the rules in place, if we're already abiding by them, what is the issue with the rule itself? Is that, you know, I'm thinking about the one time that it could go past, and then now it'll apply, right? Because we have, you know, done it before, and I don't think that's fair to the public or to us, or to the village.
In the past, did we have the previous rules and procedures, laws that couldn't extend past ten P M?
Without, it was never, it, it, our meetings would go to midnight if we wanted to, we'd just keep going. Two A M, if you know what I mean.
Would a adequate compromise be that it's ten P M with a, with a motion, and we actually stick to it?
Ten P M without a motion?
No, no, ten P M with a motion. If you want to go past ten P M, you'd have to do a motion. Would that be a, a fair compromise on that one?
You know, that would be a fair compromise, but I'm, I'm gonna say the same thing I said last month. Council meetings are business meetings. If you come here and conduct the business of the nation, right, we will be home. We are almost through this agenda already, and only been here for hour and twenty minutes. We will be home.
Well, I looked, I looked at like our data, and they do two meetings a month, and this is, this would be, in the last fifteen months, their longest meeting. Hour and twenty-four minutes, I think, was their longest meeting in the last year, the one we're gonna have to do now. But they arrange their work from half hour to an hour and a half. And they get all of their business done, and the only drawback I see to it is one extra time a month I gotta put pants on and come in here. That's the additional workload that... That's the additional workload that will be added to us, because we have to come in here, drive a half a mile down the road, and all the time extra a month to get the business done, and not delay product, like, uh, I think one of the things I thought when we came in was we don't have a present full tenure, right?
Oh.
So now we're gonna delay that another month, you know, instead of, you know... And one of the things I, I thought of, too, and it was imperative for this meeting, was a lot of times we have, in my opinion, and I don't, anybody else shares this, we kind of have peaks and, and valleys when it comes to prepping for meetings and, and village business and that. We, the meeting is a big deal, we prep for it, and then after the meeting, there's nothing for a long time, and then all of a sudden it's a spike again, and then there's a trough. And so, and having a regular meeting close together levels that off a little bit, you know, the, the meeting won't be such a substantial thing to have to get ready for, and, um, I have, I've seen it in the past, and I don't know if it happened this time either, but when you have that long gap between meetings of a month, a lot of times things get thrown in at the last minute because, oh, man, we got a meeting next week. We forgot about it, like, a couple of emails I got in here, I'm not sure what they reported, we had the holidays and that, but we get that a lot, where things get thrown in because I even had to do a meeting in a month, and now it came up, so... So alleviate a lot of that, too, and make it more of a regular thing, or, um, so we're on a routine, it becomes more of a routine.
I mentioned last month, I would love to see us maybe try it, let, let's see what we can get done, because I, you know, I'm cautious of committing future councils to meeting twice a month, and the financial, I mean, the money's a lot to be answered, but it's not going to work.
Well, if, if we did that, I would insist on the reduced payment, because I don't want it to cost any, because we're not doing more work, right? Other than driving in here one extra night, we're not doing any more work, we're still going in the same issues that we're going to go to, going frequently.
Well, we would be doubling the work of a clerk and, and officer, I mean, there is work that, that plus their place right.
Is that really interesting? Does it have to be a set pass rule to, to test it?
I don't think so. So, when I thought about one of the compromises, I thought about, too, and I had it every month, I went back and looked at all of our agendas for the past two years, and the dead months are December and January, which have historically the, the smallest agendas, and to not do two almost, because in December we have a holiday anyways, and, uh, because I think our average items on our agenda, we have fifteen items is the average over the last year and a half, and, uh, or two years that I went back and worked.
What about, you know, I, I'm remembering back of last month's meeting, and we were talking about it, what about if we were to just, you know, at, at this point, um, you know, if we see that we're gonna have a month with a heavy agenda, that we could agree that, you know, we would do a special meeting on the fourth Tuesday, or, and, and then at least that would then allow us that if there actually is a need, we could do that. And, you know, and maybe we put it into practice of, you know, if we need to have additional readings or, you know, whatnot, that we could, um, special meeting it for, for the fourth week, and then that way it would really only be what has necessary. Would that be fair?
The, the only issue I have that, though, is then we double our pay for that, to not...
You can always make the motions and not pay them, not for the special meeting.
So then, I, how about we also, instead of making our pay per meeting, just making it monthly like everybody else, the clerk, the treasurer, they're, they're, uh, paid by month, maybe, I think you are, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we can have all the special meetings we want, won't burden the residents, right?
But if you do that, then your attendance is not required. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but...
Yeah, if I, if I'm, if I'm voting here, I don't show up to any meeting, but I expect them not to go for a meeting, you know, I mean...
But by the same token, and, and, you know, let me just express my concern with the two meetings, because I will tell Mr. Mison in the front that if we go to two meetings, then I will withdraw and just hang your liaison, because if not, you might apply three of my weeks, I'm retired. I spend a lot of time in warm climates, and, and, man, you've just taken up three of my weeks.
Right.
And I, I, I just, you know...
Yeah, I mean, why don't...
We can't make a decision based on that, I mean, I respect what you're saying.
No, no, I'm just talking for myself.
Okay, okay.
Just talking for myself.
What if we, what if we put one and two on hold, or, or maybe number two, I think what we were saying was a compromise, was that we, we make a point that if it's, if the meeting has to extend past ten p.m., that it needs a motion, that was what we previously had in the rules of procedures? Would everybody feel comfortable with that? That, that seems like a fair compromise? And then for, for one, why don't we, instead of us saying, hold regular council meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday, why don't we just say, why don't we have it be, like, as needed, if there are months where the agenda topics are greater than a set threshold or something, that we then try to make a commitment that we'll do a, a special meeting for the fourth Tuesday? And then, and in theory, hopefully, I mean, let's see how, how it goes, but hopefully it might be a moot point, not really necessary.
Option.
Yeah, it's just, just an optional item that's just as needed, it's the, the trigger that we add as a backup that we can do.
The only thing I'm, I'm kind of looking for is like a hard stop somewhere on the business.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I...
The ten p.m. with a motion, we had it before, and there was no time to not do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and I, I think, though, you know, and I do agree with you about having, I like the idea of having the unfinished business up front, it's something that we, uh, I agree with, with our clerk, that we should have unfinished business up front. Um, and then, um, I also like, it was also previously mentioned about for new business, when it's an actionable item, that we try to put that up towards the top, and stuff that we have discussion, we have, um, and in theory, all of our motions and everything is all taken care of. Um, I guess what's the pleasure of it, else?
So if we want to do all the other changes as one, two, do you want to just vote on any of the block? The, the two proposals you, you guys had in, three through six, just vote on those changes to the rules of procedure?
Three.
Three through eight?
Basically, three through eight, down there.
So, yeah, so it's the two additional ones, having the, having who it is that requested it.
Isn't this kind of a discussion to change the rules of procedure, and then you vote on the actual rules of procedure on the next one?
Yes.
This is a discussion?
Yeah, I think based off of the discussion, what we probably should do is we should have the, the rules and procedures actually updated according to...
Yeah, so, because these over here would not be, that, this is like my initial information, I should have had them, rules of procedure, and they have to be incorporated somewhere in the, in actually the word, I mean, because you can't just, like, I'm finished ahead of a meeting, a pack, not...
Well, there's a, it's rules of procedure in the agenda format.
Right. Yeah, so the back format, the, the rules of procedure with this, and these changes in it.
Yeah. New council doesn't adopt the rules of procedure?
So everybody good with that one? Well, we make the changes based off the discussions that we're had tonight. Do you have it all back, Mel? I don't think we need a motion on that or anything, it sounds like everybody's in agreement. Um, all righty, so next up we have item number D, spending ordinance. So this was a update to the ordinance that was proposed by, uh, previous president, um, you know, based off of issues that we're seeing with the supply chain and, you know, cost of every, cost of everything going up. Um, the problem that we're having is that we're having to order things further out, and it's costing a lot more to get it, um, in time, so, um, what we have here, let's see, is the ordinance, um, do you want to talk a little?
Sure. First, there is a resolution, because as was discussed last week, we wanted to add the DPW superintendent and the fire chief in the same status as department heads, so they would have the same authority. So that's the first resolution. After that resolution is adopted, if it's the, uh, the board's sense to do that, then we have updated, and the only change we really made was to raise the level to four thousand dollars from twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, I think in this era of inflation, we may have to change it again next year, but it will, it, it should serve us, and that can be changed, and so there's a, there's an amendment to, what was it, three oh two, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, to three oh two. So those are the two things in front of you, the resolution, to be precise, should be adopted first, and then the amendment set.
What were the resolution and what was number D?
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three zero one.
The ordinance?
Ordinance three ninety-eight.
So three nine?
Three ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, so first we make the motion for that, this resolution?
First to adopt the resolution, and then the ordinance after that, because the ordinance prefers back these two individual, uh, offices being added into it.
Any questions on the, I guess let's, so we're starting with the resolution, any questions on the resolution?
Well, I'll move to adopt a resolution point, twenty twenty-three dash three zero one.
I support it.
Yeah, moved and supported. Do we need to roll call this?
Would again, because of the, the situation.
Yeah. Um, any questions on the motion?
Just so the public knows, we're doing this resolution, because this is what we're actually doing in practice, and we're putting it in.
I have a question.
Yeah, so refrain until, uh, we come up.
That's, that's up to you.
So, okay. So for this, we have, uh, we have the DPW, the fire chief. When it comes to the office staff, we have me as the purchasing agent, right? So now that covers the, the three main departments. You know, again, anything that they, anything that the, um, fire chief or department, uh, the DPW supervisor, superintendent, um, purchases, we'd still have to go through me for signing the purchase order, and then the two approvals, uh, or, you know, the two st- stentatories for the actual checks and, and the payments, so, you know, it's not like somebody's going to be going out and spending four thousand dollars after four thousand dollars after four thousand dollars, and, you know, freely spending our money, there's still going to be the orders right there. Any other questions on the mo, on the motion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Repoli?
Yes.
Mr. Novoski?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Dilbert?
Yes.
President Mison?
Yes. All right. So then next would be the ordinance number three ninety-eight. As, um, attorney has stated, the, um, change to is the, is raising the notch to four thousand dollar threshold. And used ordinance number three oh two as the basis.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number three ninety-eight and amend it to ordinance three oh two.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions on the motion? I have one. Sir.
So under our new rule of Canada, we would not vote on this height.
We had adopted the rules like that.
But under our new rule of Canada...
Right, so we did, we voted.
So we would take this with us, we would read it, and could we somehow make this available to the public?
Yes.
The rules would be, they have to be posted on the door, so that everybody can read this ordinance before we vote on it.
Yeah. If it's the pleasure of council tonight, we could do that. Just to, to practice what we're planning on, practice what we're planning on, even if we haven't adopted the rules of procedure yet, we could, we could still do that. We've given the, the purchasing authority to resolutions that the department has, which is, again, you know, you kind of said it, you know, unfortunately, in practice, it actually is happening, it's just making sure that they have the actual purchasing authority. You know, we have, we have cases where, you know, water meters, you know, DPW has to, has to purchase the water meters, we can't just let the house, new houses go up and not have a water meter, so, and that technically does also fall under the, um, health and, health and, uh, safety, which is afforded on your, the current ordinance. If you wanted to, sir.
So, um, the original ordinance, when Mrs. brought it up, I was against it, because I'm generally not in full favor of one checks, and that's basically what it says, but then when, um, superintendent Delbert came up and said, you know, he, when this ordinance was first passed, he could buy about a dozen water meters, and now he's down to buying two or three, maybe, and then he has to keep coming back to council, he can't do what he used to do, because prices have gone up, so that's the only reason, you know, and now in favor of it totally.
And this provision also doesn't, doesn't include the additional stuff that was included in one of the previous provisions?
In addition, if things are in a couple of ways, like Mr. Mason said, there's, the check isn't going out the door until a number of checks and balances are filed, so...
And the office staff can definitely attest that when I sign those purchase orders, I, it takes me hours, because I go through, um, I think this week there was like fifty, fifty purchase orders, and I read and question every single one of them, trying to make sure that it passes. At least we're not, like, I'm not gonna... Question everything, trust me.
So this was just a reading, the first reading?
If we, yeah, if it's the pleasure of council, we could definitely do that.
And you don't need to vote on that, right?
So, I'll, then my, my, my motion would include it, it would be posted for seven days.
And I will have mine as well.
Hold on.
So the...
Your motion was to adopt it, how did you change it to what?
So the motion is to, to post this for...
Adopt it, post it for seven days.
Post, post the ordinance for seven days for public review, and then we will re-vote on it in February, is what you're saying, trustee to vote?
Correct.
That would be the, the rules of procedure.
I seconded it, and I, so I'll second, I'll just send my original, and then I'll second.
So we'll post the ordinance for public review, break, I can decide here, maybe?
Yes.
All right, so it's been moved and supported. Um, since this is just for the posting, and it's not actually voting on the actual ordinance, I think just, uh, all in favor is appropriate?
That's it, that's appropriate, okay.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will do that, we will, uh, we'll make this available to the public, so that everybody has a chance to read it. Um, and we'll also, give also our trustees, our council, the ability to read it, and then, um, we will re, re-read it in February. Um, last but not least is the Amherst property for one dollar. Again, this is something that admittedly, um, you know, to trustee Novoski's point, I should have had a synopsis on this one. Um, as, as most of you, um, already know, but for those of you that don't, uh, when we purchased, or when we sold the Amherst property to Lombardo, uh, last year, there was a one-year stipulation where Lombardo would allow us to purchase unused, unused portion of the forty-seven acres that we sold to them for one dollar. There is some discussion about, or there's, there's some knowledge that the back portion of the, uh, forty-seven acres has a lot of lotlands. There is debate about the front portion, not necessarily debate, but unknown, about how much of the front portion is lotlands. Um, they are proposing that they are going to do a formal lotland study. They have, uh, verbally committed to me that they will allow us, um, an extension on the one-dollar agreement, so that they can actually get the results of the lotland study back. They don't, from, from the discussion that we had, it doesn't sound like they anticipate changing the layout of the front portion of, of their plan, uh, because frankly, the way the market is right now, um, they're not really that hot to get moving on it as it is. They're, they're, for the next year or two, they're really just looking at closing out what properties they already have available to, to go on. They're not looking at doing a new shop. They're not looking at doing a new shovel project. Um, so I just wanted to bring this to everybody's attention, that, um, it is something that, um, the current deadline was March. Um, so we have a couple more months, but I wanted to at least start the discussion, start having everybody thinking about it, uh, and whether or not we want to, um, purchase the unused portion for one dollar. Um, I, right now, if I remember correctly, the unused portion was about, I think thirty, thirty-something acres is what it came out to, that, um, Lombardo wouldn't be using. If we were to purchase it for a dollar, then there's the, the question of what do we do with it? You know, we could just leave it and let it be the way it is. Um, previous president Bradmore, or, you know, pre, uh, President Bradmore had previously mentioned about, um, a nature conserve. Um, just, you know, basically you would just leave it the way it is and it would just be left for nature to have and use. Uh, if we did purchase it though, although we, you know, even if you did that, there's still the frontage that would be along Clark Street that the village would be responsible for mainly savings. Um, there has been discussions with the HOAs, the HOAs are, um, sounds like they're not favorable to inheriting that portion of the property because that post owner's someone to decide what they're going to do with it. Um, there are still issues that are pending. Yeah, there's still some issues with, with the plan overall, um, the current plan that they have. They need to go back and do some reviews. So, again, just, I wanted to at least start the discussion or plan to see that this is something that is still available to us. Um, I, uh, I am planning on going back to Lombardo and at least getting that right and that they're willing to give us that extension of the, of the one dollar. Um, but otherwise, it would be March that we would have to make that decision. So, um, more of an informational, I don't know if there was any discussion, if anybody wanted to discuss it, I don't know what time, but it was really nice to just be informational. Any questions? Alright, that brings us to call from the floor. Um, again, limited to three minutes, so when you come up, please state your name and, and address, and, uh, please remember that it's a one-sided conversation, you'll be responding to your.
Cindy Hazel, accountant, office manager, and department head. I want to know why I'm not even the same rights as your department has on the spending issue of that resolution. This is the first I've heard about it, I don't feel it's fair.
Any other public comment?
I was going to ask you about the same thing, but you kind of clarified. Um, maybe, maybe about the spending and the, the purchasing portion of that, so. That's my, that. Secondly, uh, the Lombardo property, and I still think it stinks. And I think, and I can blame this board for a lot, uh, I'm sorry, not the new, not the new board members, but the old board members for allowing that to happen. Um, the forty-five dollars for forty-seven acres, it's never going to fit. And I don't think we know where a new rate we can, we can get that back. But what I wanted to get, uh, as, I encourage this board, if you had that chance to purchase that at one dollar reference in March or beyond March, um, and actually, I wouldn't even wait for an extension, I'd go ahead and purchase it. What's wetlands today will not always be wetlands over that, on that property. When Lombardo came here years ago and developed those, those properties, none of them is wetlands at that point in time. They got wetlands over, over time. And anyone that's in the building, or no, no building, or developer, land developers, know that, 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 that's land will nev, will not be wetlands forever. When Lombardo came here, half of the back part of Penbrook is wetlands. But there's homes here today. And in fact, I just seen some plans where in part of some of the wetlands that were flat within a hundred-foot flood plain are, are, are built, homes are built on those now. So I encourage, if, at any time that you had a chance to pay, purchase that for one dollar, let it go to those that, that build it that way, if you go for that.
Public comment on the agenda? Seeing none, uh, call from the, from the table, uh, I have one item. I put before everybody a, uh, sheet that we had, we had the police committee meeting last night. Uh, we had, um, met with Lieutenant Pearson regarding the, uh, midnight shift and, um, afternoon shift traffic enforcement. Um, based off of the numbers and what we were presented with, you know, we, and this is just a copy of the numbers that we had. Um, it was really apparent that the, the current afternoon shift is, is seeing a lot more activity from a traffic enforcement standpoint. And although I still, um, think that when we went with the midnight traffic enforcement, it was with the right mindset, um, you know, we want to give, uh, give a chance to have the day shift, um, um, have a traffic enforcement during the day shift. So, you know, while we were going with the midnight shift of, of doing, uh, based off of call volume, so that the traffic enforcement would alleviate when there is this high frequency of calls, which is afternoons and midnights. Um, it also would make sense to also get, try to switch the deputy over to pays so that it would mirror traffic volume, so you'd have a happier, you know, morning, afternoon, or shower. So, uh, the police committee made the, made the recommendation to, uh, to switch the midnight traffic enforcement, afternoon over the days, and, uh, that started. So I just wanted to let you know.
So, can I stop in real quick?
Sure.
So the recommendation was, could we do this for about five months on midnights? And to start in September early?
Yeah, it was supposed to, we were, we were originally planning on doing three months, three months split, um, or what we had discussed. Timing wise, it turns out it was what, nine, uh, October, November, December, and then, yeah, so about, about three and a half, three and a half, four months of, of the midnight shift.
At least I could do the day shift for about five or six months then for a customer. And our original motion was to have the second officer for six months, so like the next month we would have to come back to extend that.
Um, right, yeah. Yeah, right now, we, we only did the trial for six months. So if we decided we want to continue it on, we're going to have that motion to extend the rest. And I think right now, that's all that we're, it's just, right now, we're just doing this until the end of the six months that the day shift can, uh, person be doing.
More than we need done for that part of that, because.
Yeah.
And I mean, look at all the six hundred incidents that were, that were used. I think it's like, you know, time, I think they're, they're needed there.
Any other, um, call from the table? Alright, uh, next up is a closed session, if we can have a motion to go on a closed session to discuss. Yeah, we need a motion to, uh, go on a closed session to discuss our litigation with, uh, the village attorney.
Um, we go into closed session, uh, headed.
Support.
Gonna move in support of, roll call.
What can, what was the reason?
Litigation with.
And needs litigation.
Move in support and supportive, um, roll call?
Mr. Propoli?
Yes.
Mr. Maccauskey?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Nona?
Yes.
Mr. Dilbert?
Yes.
President Weissel?
Yes.
We have a motion to return from closed session.
Moved.
Yeah, at nine thirteen, for the record. Move in supportive, all in favor?
Aye.
And the motion.
I will make a motion to, um, direct, uh, Mr. Evans, our attorney, to continue with litigation and, um, research additional litigation, is that the proper?
It's that to proceed as directed.
Proceed. Thank you, sorry.
Support. Move in supportive, uh, roll call?
Mr. Maccauskey?
Yes.
Mr. Dilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Nona?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Propoli?
Yes.
Mr. Weissel?
Yes. Another motion's noted.
Do a adjournment at five o'clock.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.